Our meeting will now come to order. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance, we give the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence for all men and women in the armed forces, for our police and firefighters who protect our safety here in our community. And today we remember those who lost their lives during the Normandy invasion, Cool D Day on June 6, 1944, 75 years ago today. For the most part, they were young men, some 18, some 19 years of age. This invasion was said to be the beginning of the liberation of France in World War II. There are some 9,833 Americans buried in the cemetery there. Please be seated. See me ready or not, hopefully we are going to the board of trustee approval for volunteer firefighters. Joseph Delaney, Michael Fontanella, Marco Parinella. Chief, would you like to comment?
Thank you, ma'am. We have a great junior firefighter program led by Chief Moran, which prepares high school students and helps them step into some of the duties of becoming a firefighter. I'm pleased to announce that two of the three new firefighters presented tonight are a result of this very effective training program. Please say my full name, while you're standing there. Joseph Delaney. Joseph will be graduating from Broad Street High School this month. He was a participant in our junior firefighter program during his high school years. And he'll be attending SUNY Maritime College of the Fall. Michael Fontanella. Michael will be also graduating from the Broad Street High School this month. During high school, he also was a member of our junior firefighter program. During the summer, he is a pool lifeguard and will be attending College of the Fall. Marco Parinella. Marco is a rising senior attending Delphi University, studying business management with a minor in criminal justice. He's also employed part-time as a sales associate at an elderly store in Roswell Field Mall. We're on how these new members start off.
May I have a motion to approve the... The appointment, please. The appointment of these three volunteer firefighters. That was someone that did... First, trustee Macino. And the second, trustee Foley. One favor. I... That motion passed unanimously. Welcome to our volunteer fire... At this time, we will consult with department heads and our village administrator to give us some information on the agenda items. Can we begin with Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, ma'am. Number one, appropriation of revenue. This is reimbursement received for the purchase of six pool pro vests to the USA, covered half the cost. We are ready to receive the first half of the tours from the federal government, so all six vests will award on grand morning day spree. Also, this morning announced during the holiday, CPO DWI enforcement detail for the week of Memorial Day, we had three checkpoints where we had 31 seatbelt tickets. Four drivers were charged with suspended licenses. Eight individuals violated violations and we also have one DWI arrest.
Thank you. Ms. Joan, Joan Mello.
Good evening, ma'am. I don't have anything on the agenda tonight as far as the bill department goes. I just wanted to let the board members know that this week we performed our annual certification, code certification, through Stonyburg University for our code enforcement renewal. So we completed that. As of today, we're certified for the rest of the year.
Very good.
Francisco, before we go further, if I could just pass these on to... These are for the request of the original property, for the original files. People's project.
Thank you.
From the West Property Association.
Chief Strisca.
Thank you, ma'am. I have two items, items five and six. First, professional service contract with Alpine Software. They manage our red alert system. It's a tenants and coal logging program in all our fire trucks and cheese vehicles. It's just a renewal from last year. And in agreement with Advanced Control Industries, they maintain our door lock system on all three stations.
Very good. Mrs. Wu.
Thank you. On the agenda tonight, we have item number three. This is a transfer of funds from the street lighting department in DPW back to repay the loan that was taken out originally for the LED project. So maybe we call back in 2016. The trustees appropriated $725,000 from surplus to fund the LED lighting program with the intention that the savings from installing the LED lighting, the savings, the electrical savings, will help pay back the loan as well as any favorable savings from debt services as well. So this is year four of the payback of the loan. So this leaves a balance of $145,000 to be repaid. Initially, it was expected that this would be repaid in five years. So we are well on our way to repay back this loan.
Excellent. Yes.
So first part of your explanation was a saving to help repay. Is that proven to be true?
Yes, that's what we've been using to pay back the loan. That's right.
So you said how much, though?
$145,000 out of the initial $725.
To Mrs. Wu, if I understand correctly, then the loan is paid back. Now this would be the gift that keeps on giving.
I'm saying that again.
Would be the gift that keeps on giving.
Yes, correct. That the loan is paid back. Correct.
So it's good to hear that we'll be able to take care of the year short of what we anticipated.
Well, within the five years that was anticipated. So next year should clear off the loan.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Francisco.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I have a number of items on the agenda this evening. Item number seven is the engagement of Tyson Krug for an elevator maintenance agreement for the elevators throughout the village. This includes the one here in Village Hall, the passenger elevator at the library, the book elevator at the library. And it also includes a maintenance agreement for the lift at Community Park in the tennis center. The... We are renewing our agreement with Tri-State Transportation, who does our drug and alcohol testing, which is a requirement for CDL drivers, which we have many in the village. We're renewing our agreement with Pace Analytical. They are the company that does our water quality testing and sampling. And the samples are brought to them for testing. Item number 10 just reiterates that the water rates on June 1st were increased by 5%. That was something that was discussed at the budget sessions earlier this year. That went into effect effective June 1st. I have a number of bids that I'm awarding this evening, and these are annual bids that we do in terms of general operations throughout the village. A lot of them are attributed to the street department. Crushed Stone is for any road repairs we need to do and other work around the village. Traffic signs is pretty self-explanatory. Leaf picker parts, concrete, steel items, street sweeper parts. These are all items that we use on a regular basis in DPW throughout the year for the repairs that are done in and about the village. And the last item is a renewal of the street lighting maintenance contract with Ankers Electronic. This is the second year of a two-year contract that was bid last year. And they maintain the street... Assist doesn't maintain the streetlight system throughout the village.
For 92,610. For $92,610.
For... Oh, yes. For the streetlight, yes.
Right. And that's the same price that we had before.
Yes, so we know that, yes.
Mr. Francisco, the question is just kind of a general. Everybody will remember years ago, we were having a lot of problems with the elevator at the library. And when we decided that we would take back control of the operations of the building, one of the things that we did was it was one of our projects. And a couple of years ago, we actually replaced the elevator and put everything in there with brand new. And I have not heard since we have done that one single complaint. So am I correct in assuming that everything is doing to run smoothly?
Yes, but I mean, it is... You know, there is maintenance required annually and it needs to be inspected. So we did... It is good to have a maintenance agreement in place with our company on call, so yes.
Right, but everything has been running?
Yeah, I think there's been a few minor issues.
We do always have those.
Yes, yes.
Right, right. Okay.
All right, Mr. Swasey, did you have anything that you wanted to share with us this evening?
Ma'am, it's not an agenda item. The executive staff have covered it, but I have an empty on the pool if we want to wait till after reporting.
Well, you can do it now. Is it brief?
Yes, it's brief.
Good.
You know, the pool was on Saturday, June 8, and the pre-pool work continues. You know, the staff is down there hustling. The new shade structure that we were waiting for came in. It's... The foundation was toward and it's standing there now. There's some final details being performed by the contractor today and tomorrow. Just touch of stuff. The new scoreboard on Field 3, the remote control came in. The staff was trained on it and it's at the now disposal of the Little League Volunteers to start their games. The new playground for the park will resume on Tuesday. The park cameras that the board okayed are now functioning. The entire pool complex is online. All of Community Park is online except for two cameras. They should operational within this 96 hours if not sooner. And I just want to say kudos to everyone. The entire rec team, our consultant, Mr. Blake. There's so much energy down there and they're doing such a nice job. And I also want to call out Steve, who does wall planting on the upper lower parts of the park. And also DPW, once again assisted. They rebuilt the retaining wall on Nora Park, Freddie Sillinger and his crew. And they also repaired the upper deck by the stamp bar, removed the shipping hazard. So I also wanted to say, you know, we talked about memberships last week, last meeting. Last year at this time, 66, there were 853 family memberships. Right now, we're at 797. Revenue as of right now, 66 is 747, 430. This time last year was 628, 282, about 16% less. But I was down for about 25 minutes today. And while I was there, at least a dozen people walked up to sign up to the pool. So it's been that's been going on all day. So the numbers are increasing during the day with just walk-ups. That's my thing now.
Sounds like a very good opening here. It does, and I'm hoping that we will get more membership. And I'm sure we will.
And the work was... The pool was very nice, very fresh, clean, and... That was the place to be.
That's good news. All right, at this time, I'm wondering if any of the trustees have any questions or anything that they would want to discuss?
Ma'am, I'd just like to say I was honored to be involved in the Stanley Cup playoff for the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders of the direction. And he was kind enough to invite me down there and disagree that that facility is just first-class.
Good, that's a good... Good to hear. All right, now at this time, the trustee...
Joseph, are these formed up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a reminder to everyone, these forms are sitting out there on the outside table. Again, remember that one of the things that we've done is we have digitized all of the records that we have in the building department. And one of the things we're doing is we're giving everyone an opportunity to obtain the file on your house of all your original papers. So please do me a favor. Please, if you haven't picked one up, please pick it up, fill it out, bring it over to the building department or if you're here, give it to Joseph tonight. And what will happen is this way you can receive the file, a hard copy that we have. And this way, again, if and event you know of any friends or neighbors or anything else, please take it and give it to them and give it to them as well. Oh, by the way, thank you to the newspaper. Thank you to Mrs. Oldman. And thank you to putting this out there. I've seen this on Facebook. I've seen this in the newspaper. Everyone has been reporting it. I just want to say thank you for that.
Very well. And yes, trustee Dwyne.
I thought you talked to Chief Strisca. Chief, can you update? So the Comfort Station in St. Paul's, as I reported a meeting or so ago, the work on the Comfort Station has near completion. There were a lot of issues with the tiles that the subcontractor put down. All during the course of the construction, we called them out daily. They made attempts to correct it. At the end of the day, we would not accept the job and we had to rebuttal the tiles. I think I showed pictures of that when we had the slideshow a couple of meetings ago. Since then, the project's been on hold. One of these has been on hold because when we reflected on what was being put down, these smaller tiles, we thought now we had an opportunity to revisit what would we do with the floor and the walls. The choices are, and I want to talk to the board about this, there are three choices. I talked to the owner of the company yesterday and again today. That's the first time I spoke to him directly. He said, "Mr. Swasey, we're waiting on the village. We... They have acted very professionally. They have... They saw the tile work. They agreed it with subpar, and they acted quickly. They're waiting on us now to make a decision." The decision is to let them proceed as originally specified with the same exact tile, the 6x6 Scooby-Doo ground tiles. We can also take the opportunity, if we so wish, to put down a concrete floor with epoxy coating, which is recommended by three architects of me, including our own, Mr. Chivinella. And then put tiles on the wall. And the third choice would be to go with tiles on the wall and floor, but choose a bigger tile that was more representative of a commercial bathroom. I have samples in the back boardroom if you want to look at them tonight. The thing is that whatever choice we make, there's going to be a price point. If we go with the original specification just to get the work done, it's still going to take at least two weeks before it can mobilize. And it should come out pretty much the same. It might get small credit. It might kind of take the same overall cost to us. If we want to change to a concrete tile, the second choice, it'll be priced out and any additional cost to the project, which the board have to prove. And so that would be the case of the third choice by all time. So at some point, I like direction from this board. Doesn't have to be right now publicly. But I like direction on the board. Do we stay with what we have? Or do we, like I would say, do it a little better, more robustly? Now, which choice you make, it'll take about the same amount of time. There's no time delay on any choice. It's just a financial decision at this point. I also talked to the owner of the company about the subcontractor used. I said I'd like them to be replaced. He has to work that out legally, but he is bringing in someone who is... He hopes to bring someone who supervised the work himself, who does work on park damage all the time. So directly engage with the owner and the engineers and the architect for Sausage and the cost. I don't know what was on tonight that we did this just today.
Maybe we could look at it?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. The IG we're putting in a cement floor doesn't sound positive to me. I have never seen one. But I think that since we're doing that over, there are a lot of good tiles in style and in fashion that are very large. And go ahead.
I just want to say this, you know, this is... At the end of the day, this is a bathroom. Let's say highly needed bathroom. So functionally, any choices we choose will be fine. But we're really trying to unpack the problem we have at the beginning, which was not caught, and really say, what are we going to do with all the other bathrooms we have to create in this community? We have so many bathrooms in this village.
I think we need to come up with a standard.
Right, exactly.
And then everybody uses it. You know, let's also focus on the real problems here. There's a total lack of oversight. Sorry that that's anybody will take what's true. And there's no... There doesn't seem to be much of a choice.
Can you hear me?
Sorry. Doesn't seem to be much of a choice to maybe we should do it right. And I don't know that we're responsible for shoddy work right now. I wouldn't pay him. So I... Did we pay him today?
No.
So then I don't know what legally he has to work out with his subcontractor.
No, no, but whatever choice...
But he should be paid.
Whatever choice we made, it has to be costed out through making different decisions. If we change what they originally contracted to do, it becomes a change order. Change order.
I'm very familiar. But to the mayor's point, we went to all this pain. Place has been closed, da-da-da-da. We should do it right. We shouldn't open another, you know, P O S bathroom for no reason because we're rushing for what? I don't know. If anything, quite frankly, the border jobs that are there are probably at the appropriate capacity for the usage. Having, you know, two urinals and a toilet on lacrosse tournament day, I can tell you is not great. But I think to the mayor's point, we should find out what tiles we like, create that as a standard. And then every time we do a bathroom, it's a no-brainer. I do understand their point on epoxy floor and we can color them and do some things to it because they sound as rough as it sounds. And if the usage, you know, warrants that, we should look into that. But like, this should be presented prior to the job, you know, not halfway through. I mean, you yourself described the tile color as Scooby-Doo. Now, it doesn't make me feel really great to color this one. Yes, I've got any better. You know, that's not a good... Not a great sounding product. So I think we should talk about it and we should just pull the Band-Aid off. Get it done, get it done right. I'm sure the price point is more than worth it to get it done properly than to go back in two years and spend another bundle of money on a bathroom we don't like.
Are you agree with that?
That's why the...
All right. What I was going to say is this. I understand that this is a situation that was inherited. I understand this is a situation that we need to handle. As far as I'm concerned, in the age of technology, there's no reason why this decision can't be made in one week. So we can sit there and say, here's what we're going to do. Here's the tiles that we have. Here's the choices of them. What are the other choice of tiles that we have? We turn around, we take those pictures, we send them out to the entire board. We sit, we look, we make a decision. While we're doing that, whatever needs to be required by the general contractor, this is the decisions you have to make. You're going to give me an answer by Wednesday. Done, okay? If in the event you don't, that's fine. We turn around, we get somebody else. We'll see you until the stone age. And what we're going to do is that by next Friday, this gets resolved. So myself personally, we had two large events that occurred in St. Paul's. We're sitting there with water copies. And I mean, to me, it is so frustrating when I sit there because, again, I sit there because, again, with so many quality projects that we've done, like the pool, like so many other places and things that we've done, it just seems that this is one of those projects that just simply continues to go the way that it is. And I think what we need to do is we need to simply sit there and say, you should not get dragged on, let's turn around, let's communicate, let's, tell us when everything's done, and let's get this done by next Friday. I mean, to me, I can't conceive why that can't get done. And if in the event they won't work with you and they won't help you, then turn around and say, fine, have a nice life, let's get somebody else. That's my opinion.
All right, let's do our best that we can. And recently, bathrooms have changed their appearances. They have very large tiles on, they facilitate cleaning, they're very stylish looking. I would say that we want to do a good job because we will not be doing, hopefully be doing them again for a long period of time, you know? So, I'm available, if you'd like me to come over and look at them, you know, I have two...
We're actually in the back room tonight, but the point is, I want to point out, the workmanship with Shawnee, we shut it down, we had to pull it out, we do what we're supposed to do, we're at a decision point now, and it's not just about completing this bathroom. As trustee Menudo said, what we do here is setting a footprint for it in the future, so we want to get it right, let's define, everyone's working on it, but I've been to three tile stores and I have a collection in my office, I feel like I can sell them out of there. I'd like to get this behind us.
Okay, good, split price.
But I do, I do need the direction of the board. At the end of the day, if we're gonna pick a good tile at approximately the same cost, it's a totally different look and feel, and I just need you to give me directions. Do you want to just complete what we have done and put it behind us, which I think is the wrong choice? But then, what could go with a better choice? Is it gonna cost money, which I don't have numbers for yet, but I did it by next Friday.
All right, we can discuss that just a little bit. Okay, very good. At this time, we are going to invite the residents to come up and comment on items on the agenda, item, uh, the agenda. You have four minutes. Please come up and speak directly into the microphone, Mr. Stone.
Leo Stone, I'm on the road. I'd like to talk about item 20 on page four, the St. Paul's construction fence. I think anything would be better than the red and white Soho, Soho-style loose barricades up there now. But I hope that the Department of Public Works, which is seen responsible for preparing the specs for the fence, will present something to the board that is in keeping with the history and the beauty of that building. And in fact, I would hope that they would consider running by their plan, whatever it is for this fence, with the civic beautification committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Someone else? Anyone else right now? Agenda items? All right. Right now, we are going to open a public meeting. A proposed public meeting is a proposed law to authorize a temporary pilot program of restricted parking in the western side of Florida City Parkway Field 7N. Under a pilot program to entail 35 parking spaces for a period of up to one year for persons residing in the premises adjacent to Field 7N at a fee of $275 for the duration of the pilot program. This is to be a type two and would therefore be exempt from further secret review. And have a motion to open the public meeting. Mr. Menudo, Mr. Menudo opens the motion as second. Trustee Delaney, second's motion or favor? Stay high, the motion is unanimous. Any discussion on that motion? Do we have any discussion on that motion? Yes?
Not now.
Oh, okay, all right, not now. Okay.
So the public hearing, you have any more comments from members of the board or from the public?
Members of the board, do we have any motion? Do we have any comments? All right, it is unanimous to open the public meeting. The public meeting is now open. Are there any trustees or residents that wish to speak relevant to the public hearing? And if so, will they come forward?
I would like to know how did you write that 275?
Did you say any addresses?
Mary Dunn, and I have two addresses at the moment, 115 Sackville Road, anybody want to buy a house? And 67 Hilton Avenue. So, the 275, I'm interested in how you write that. I'm interested to find out if these people that are taking up all the spaces all day and walking across to the train are gonna be charged? And are you gonna be putting in any more disabled spaces?
Are you gonna have...
Are you gonna be putting in any more disabled spaces?
Oh.
No.
Well, the 275, I mean, in the meetings that we talked about, we just took the amount of money that the residents pay for the train spaces, which was, what was it?
Residents paid 150.
150 for a space at the train, considering this is 24/7, seven days a week, we thought, you know, there's a lot of discussion, 25, 250, 275, it's a guess, it's a benchmark, you know? It's, what do we say, like, less than a dollar a day kind of thing? Again, it's a pilot, there's nothing permanent about it. We think we're making a good guess if there's, you know, somebody else that's got a good suggestion, we're opening here, but we've been talking about this for a long time.
I'll explain my thought process on this. This is just right in line, and this has been said many times, and it's constantly said, no one has explained to us why it's 275 dollars. Okay, well, hey, if in the event you come to any of the meetings that we've had in this, we've had several of them, we've gone over this, so I apologize, but this is very frustrating. So let's go through this one last time. If I go and I get a parking spot at a train station, and I'm working Monday to Friday, bottom line is, is that I pay 150 dollars a year to park at the train station. Yes, some people can come on a weekend if they go into the city, but bottom line is, for example, I have a parking spot, I have a stick around my car, I don't work in the city, what I do is I use it on the weekends. So the bottom line is, those people pay 150 dollars. Where's the other place located where you have the 200, I don't, where's the location of the 200 permits?
106, 105 Fair Court.
Okay, so at Fair Court, what ends up happening is the people who work there, Monday to Friday, they have parking lots there, and they have a permit. So they're working there Monday to Friday, they go to the business, and how much do they pay? They pay 200 dollars a year in order for that permit. So they are going to work, and I don't think that they're there seven days a week, 24 hours a day.
They work in the town.
They go Monday through Friday. So, when you now sit there and when you now say, why is it 275 dollars? The reason for it is because the people who will park there at these spots have the ability to park in permanent spots seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Therefore, all of that is in line with the other rates that we have charged in the village. In addition to that, when it snows, those spots will be plowed just like the rest of the lot. So all the different things that happens there, so again, if you simply look at that and you look at them one compared to the other, it is perfectly in line. So that's the reason why most of us, as we discussed this felt, some people's photos should be higher, some people thought that this was okay, but the bottom line is, that's the reason why it's 275. So, and no one here has to now say, I don't understand why 275 was charged. Now, you may agree or disagree, but understand, and I've already, I've explained this three times at three different meetings, so I hope that everyone can remember, this is the reason why. So I apologize if that comes off harsh, but it's very frustrating when you say this over and over and over again, and then people turn around and constantly say, no one has told me why it's 275. So, and again, you may not have been at the meetings, I don't know, but that's the reason why.
The only other point to note ahead is, this is just the first step. The next step that we're going to address is the commuters that are parking there, the time zones that people can park there, where the two-hour parking is, where the seven-hour parking is, so this is just the first step.
Right, so maybe Ken, you can discuss now with the permit area, how that frees you guys up to enforce against the commuter parkers, because at the end of the day, that's really why this kind of whole issue was generated.
Yes, what it does, it takes many of the people who are living in the buildings, in that 67 Hilton, to park in the permit areas allows us to be able to enforce the eight-hour zone a lot easier, and gives the opportunity for residents to be out of that zone. Because many times what we saw is, when a resident pulls out to go away in a free zone, some people will pull in there, whether to work or go to train, whatever else. So this gives them the opportunity to have a spot all the time to park, and then we're gonna enforce the eight-hour zone.
Anyone else who would like to comment?
I didn't hear anything about the disabled spaces.
At this time, there was no plans to increase the spaces with disability, with disability.
Please give us your name and address.
My name is Francie Maronka, I live at 67 Hilton. And in spite of your reasoning about why it should be 275 dollars for us, everyone else is paying a lower fee than we are, and even though we're, we have a parking space seven days a week, many, most of the people in that live in 67 Hilton are senior citizens and they're on fixed incomes. And I think that that's something that wasn't taken into consideration. That's one of the reactions I have. Another reaction I have is, I would like to know how you can start a pilot program when you have only 25% of the people who live in the building acknowledging that they want to pay a fee and have space. You are, there are, 75% of the people are not agreeing with this. You're putting aside 30 parking spaces approximately, there are 104 apartments, some people in the building want more than one space. How you go, what's, what happens when you, if you go ahead with the plan of having 30 spaces available for 104 apartments? What happens to the people who decided not to do it or are reluctant to do it? And where are they gonna park while you're figuring out how to deal with commuters? Well, how are you gonna, how will you go?
Deal with the survey?
Yeah, I think it's worth saying that this board didn't generate this idea. This came up from residents at 67 Hilton through...
I don't know, I don't think so.
Then I think we should do it. I mean, I think that then I should do it.
Let's not do it. Let's not do it. Let's take it off right now. Let's not do it all, any things the way they are.
Honestly, let's take it off right now. There's no reason to do this. We are literally fighting with ourselves.
I absolutely disagree. I will absolutely disagree. The issue, the issue, well, again, that's your point. The issue that we have in this lot is that we have a situation where we have many people who are parking there all day long, and what ends up happening is they end up going to use the train. And people have been complaining about this for years.
And this isn't ever just a stop date.
Right, exactly. So, the bottom line is, is that first of all, when you talk about the survey, there was 104 mailings that were sent down. There were 50 responses. Okay, so that's 48%. Anybody who, anybody who does this survey, to get 48% back is amazing. Now...
How do you get 48% agreement?
So, no, I didn't say that. I said, you had 48% of the people responding to your survey.
Right.
You had 21, 20 people that have said no.
Right.
And you had 29 people that said yes. Matter of fact, two of them wanted two spots, which we're not going to do.
Right.
All right. So, the reason that we originally said 29, and now we've increased it to 35, is because as people are now looking at this, we have more and more people who are coming up, three or four people who are saying, you know what, actually I'd like to have a spot. So that's the first point. The second point is, you say, what happens to all the rest of the people who want to take a permit? What will end up happening is, is that, again, as I mentioned here before, is that I worked with Ken Jackson for two years on the lot behind the medical building, and every single action you take, you have a reaction. So what ends up happening is, this takes time. So once we end up taking those 29 people and moving them towards the apartments, which now they have spots right next to the apartment, and they're willing to pay for it, and they're gonna enjoy those spots because they're right next to the building, we will then have to designate an area that will be eight-hour parking, which will be further away, which will then enable those other people who chose not to buy a permit spot to be able to park there. What you then can do is, you then can sit there, and then you can allocate the other spots in the lot. For example, in Kifu, you could set aside 20 spots or so for one hour. Why? Because you want people coming in and out. For the people over by Dunkin' Donuts and the orchard, you could sit there and you could turn around and make that three hour, so that this way people could stay long enough to go have lunch, shop a little, but then they leave. And instead of having eight hour the rest of the lot, what you now do is you now change that to maybe, let's say, six hours. The advantage to that is, the people who live there now will park in the other eight-hour area, but the commuters who keep going, if Ken Jackson now converts that to six hours, guess what? They're gonna get tickets all day long, and they will not continue to park there. They will either have to get a permit and park in the lot, or they're gonna have to go someplace else, which will alleviate the problem of those people taking up the 40 to 50 spots every day that all the residents have been complaining about, which helps the residents who live there, it helps the businesses that are there, and it helps us during events. So even though some of you may be frustrated about this, and I used in trustee Menudo's point, but this is something which will actually help, and that's the reason why this is a pilot program. Let's try this, let's see if it works. If it doesn't, then we scrap it in the end, but at least let's give it a try to try to address this.
What about the possibility of, as a pilot program, issuing permits to the people who live, the people that want them in the Hilton Mall? And when the, they post their permit on their cars and the police go through the lot and obviously have to change the eight-hour parking, but when the police go through the lot and somebody's parked in an eight-hour parking zone and they don't have a permit, then they get ticketed.
Because permits cause problems. Let me explain to you why. You sit there and you have a permit in your car. Relative comes, friend comes, they sit there, either they stay overnight or they stay all day long. All of a sudden, now they're getting tickets. People turn around, they change cars, oh, I don't have the permit on my car. So what ends up happening is, is that you end up having a logistics nightmare with permits. I've seen them in many villages, I've seen them in many situations, and that's the problem with permits.
So why would you not have that problem for the 30 original permits that you're going to give to the people that said yes they want?
Because when a person sits there and they pay 275 dollars, they get a permit on their car, and now they can, they can park anywhere in that area that they have. It's a totally different system than just giving a permit.
I don't understand.
Okay.
What is the area?
So you just made use of, yeah, that's what I wanted to respond to.
I did four minutes of stuff there, yeah.
The, I read that after you give out the first 30 permits, the place that you were thinking about adding another 30, if in fact this goes well, is across the street from Village Hall. And again, in addition to the fact that you're asking 275 dollars from each person who gets a permit, all senior citizens, they are also frail, a lot of them, and me. I mean, I come from, I do my shopping and I come, if I have to park over near First Village Hall, it's a hall. And it is not taken into consideration the people in this community that have, have, that work so hard to be where they are. It's not fair. It's just not fair.
And I agree, I'm not saying this in any way to be funny or snarky or anything. I think we genuinely thought we were doing this to help out. If you guys don't feel like this helps, we don't have to do it, I mean, I'm not voting for it.
Let's take it off the table.
Yeah, I would take it right off. Let's take it off mine, let's go.
But if they take it off your table, you're gonna have the same problem that you have with commuters.
But that's, but clearly this is making an additional problem that they don't want. So we're happy that I, we should just take it off.
I'm telling you right now, if we take this off the table and we vote, I'm just telling you right now, I know this sounds terrible, don't ever come to us again and say, oh, no, no, that we have problems when people park in there all day long, we have the communities who are there, and it's so frustrating because we're trying to resolve something, and it's literally...
It's really, it's, again, I think, again, I think that we did think that this pilot might be a good way to demonstrate some way to get around the commuters and not give out a lot of tickets to residents, but if, I'll repeat it, if this creates a new problem, one that you don't want, then we, it does not have to be here. This is not, I saw in the paper, somebody wrote a letter, this is a money grab. I mean, this doesn't even make that much money, charging 275 dollars. It's not worth the paper it's on. We should just eliminate it and move on with our lives. I mean, there's gotta be a good TV show or a ballgame on that we can all be watching. Let's get moving.
That is horrible.
Good. Not for me.
Next.
A pilot, by definition, a pilot program is an experimental trial that helps an organization learn how a large-scale project might work in practice. Why are the residents of Hilton Mall asked to purchase a 275 dollar permit to pay for this pilot program?
You know, I think we have spoken to that many times. The permit is going to give you a guaranteed spot for 24/7, 365 days a year. That's, as those type spots exist in apartment houses in general, that is a generous price. You will never have to worry about going out, in and out of the apartment to, you know, take care of where your car will park. I just really think that we have done a lot of work on this, and we have shown a lot of good faith on this, and I would be extremely disappointed if it didn't go through this evening. We have been with this for quite a length of time.
I do have a question, if, I'm sorry, apologies to interrupt you, and I would ask honesty here, just the people who live at 67 Hilton, just those people, no one else, so if your husband and wife, you only get one hand up, put your hand up if you do not want this to go through. Okay, wait, no, okay, no, no, you live at 67 Hilton, you do not want this to go through, again, your household gets one hand, so how many do we have? One, two, three, four, five, six, okay, so we have six. We have, okay, great, we have 29 residents who have said, I want it. So before we sit here and throw out everything we worked, no disrespect to the people here because of six people who say, I don't think we should have it, we have 29 residents who pay their taxes, who live here, who say, I am willing to do this because I think this is a good idea. So all I'm saying to you is, before you vote no, consider that.
With one exception in this case, I generally agree with what you're saying. If we just kind of offered this, you know, as an option, kind of out of the blue, I get what you're saying. But this was intended to correct an issue that was happening to these people in that lot, which was, they're getting a lot of tickets because they were getting, and they were getting their spots taken by commuters, and then they were getting penalized along with those commuters when Ken would go to enforce. So if the, the need or the want is not there, these are the guys that we were trying to help, if they're telling us, they're coming here, you know, shaking their fists at, I have no, I have no interest.
29 residents have said yes.
But we offered it in an attempt to alleviate this problem.
Right, but what I'm saying to you, Lucy, you're sitting here and you're saying, okay, so the six people who come, and they're gonna argue, you know what, I'm gonna listen, I'm gonna listen to the six people. And the other 29 who say, no, I think this is...
I get what you're saying, but these are the six people that brought it here in the first place.
But the scope is expanded to have 29 people that...
Right, you now answer the rest of the, you now answer the rest of the building, and now that's it, but you, but the whole thing that I hear you are saying is, how are you going to address, how are you going to address the rest of the lot? Commissioner Jackson, who has done this in the village in so many places and times, has said, this is the first step, and once we do this step, we can then do the rest of the parks from here.
I agree, I agree that it's a good solution, but it...
So if you want, if you want to try to address the other parts, this is what the plan was.
Mayor?
All right, I'm sorry, I believe your tone is on.
But I believe he interrupted me.
I did, I did.
We did not come to ask for paid permits. We came to get relief from free commuter parking.
Correct.
And it's filled every day.
No, you want free permits, I know what you want.
Of course we do. We want the commuters. We drive there.
They're not free, they pay taxes.
Wait, after this...
But you don't pay taxes on your parking lot. The people who are helping in their home pay for the taxes. You don't pay for the municipal lots, so if you go home, you don't pay taxes.
And we pay rent.
This is, but this is why we shouldn't do it, this, there's too much...
All right, interrupt or not, interrupt, excuse me, interrupt or not, I think that your tone is on. Please be seated.
Well, we believe that the police commissioner said they do not have people to issue tickets to the commuters because they don't come that on duty, that rule. So the commuters park for free, they are not given tickets, and they're not residents who pay taxes.
Next.
May I address this issue? I don't live in this building, I live at 365, but they have, they have a board in their own building.
They've been...
Thomas Scott from 365 Stewart Avenue. You have a board in your building, right?
No. No records.
This is mine. Okay, so why can't we call on, you know, take a petition door to door?
Let's just get a proposal.
Why can't you take a petition door to door?
Please, please, excuse me, please address the board.
Address the board.
That, that must be obvious.
Well, I'm trying to help them out here, and find a solution for everybody on both sides, okay, for you and for them, and I think if they just took a petition door to door, and they came up with a vote...
That's what we did, and 29 people said yes, we'd like that.
So what happened to the other ones?
They said no, or they faced, they didn't...
They didn't say, they didn't say no to this idea. They said, they weren't the issue in buying a parking space. They did not say no to the idea. They said, no, we wouldn't buy one. That's completely different.
All right, I'm going to ask you to be seated. Thank you. Yes.
I want to talk about parking, handicap parking.
Name that room, sir.
Sixty-seven Hilton, sixty-seven handicap parking spots. Majority of people that live there are handicapped, a lot of them drive. Why is there only seven spots for handicaps?
Is it in seven N?
Yes.
Oh, is this in seven N?
Yes.
In seven N, we are in excess of federal regulations in terms of handicap parking. So I, you know, I want you to know that before you speak to it. It's not that we are, have neglected that. We are in excess of federal regulation on handicap parking. Isn't that so, Commissioner? Am I correct on that?
That's good.
Yeah. Joe, yes, absolutely. Okay, continue.
Well, I go to Echo Park, I've known it for years, you know where it is in that spot.
Will you speak right into that microphone?
Sorry, what is his name?
My name is Andy Donakil. Okay.
Okay, continue.
And I'm the name is, sixty-seven Hilton. I've been going to Echo Park Pool area when I first opened up. The parking spot there is about a quarter of the size of the parking lot that we have here. By Hilton, there's about twenty handicap parking spots there. Who determines that?
That's all determined by the government.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is all determined by the government.
Our government is not doing a good job for us there, is it?
Well, what it's about is that if every handicap spot that you put in...
I would suggest...
For every handicap spot that you put in, you're eliminating the second gap.
Excuse me. We're not going, we're not going forward if more than one person speaks at the same time. There are guidelines for coming up, I'm not speaking to you necessarily.
Okay.
There are guidelines for coming up and speaking, and we are generous with listening to what you say, we're glad to be so, but I'm not going to listen to more than one person speaking at the same time. Now, I think you still have some time left, so why don't you continue?
Well, what can we do to try to resolve?
I don't think that that's our area.
For whose area is...
Tannehill Street.
We are in excess of, we're within regulations.
Any of you living in Hilton Hall that are a handicap?
Can I make your pardon?
Any of you living in Hilton Hall, little handicap, can you have my word on a board?
Yes, but we have handicap spaces there, is what I'm saying to you.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
We have more than adequate handicap spaces. I think we're in excess there.
There's only seven handicap parking spaces, seven.
You're wired, John.
Okay, I think that your time is up. May I ask you to sit down? Thank you. Yes.
My name is Sam Myers, I live in sixty-seven Hilton Hall. I have four children, I have a dog, by the way. Who cares what the federal regulation is? The requirement of having handicap spots, okay, that, you know, sit outside of a Walmart, the handicap spots aren't the same as a place where I lived in Hilton Hall. I'm a little bit younger than these ladies, okay, but we have a need, there is a need for more handicap spaces. Okay, and so you comply with the law. That doesn't mean anything. Comply with what your community needs. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Saltman, I live in sixty-seven Hilton. And, where am I gonna start? Right now, as in the current situation, I park in that parking lot twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. And when it snows, yes, they do plow here. Just thought I'd throw that in. But it's a pretty good rate. I don't pay a thing. And I just wanted to ask you, do you guys plan anything else other than what's going on here for that parking lot to forbid me to park twenty-four-seven? There's nothing else on the agenda? Okay, let me just throw this out now. Why don't you give the people in sixty-seven Hilton, give them a sticker for a hundred bucks, okay? And then put a sign up, if you don't have the sticker and you're parking twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, you're gonna get a ticket.
That's literally the exact idea we were talking about, but instead of for a hundred bucks, we're saying we're two-seventy-five. Where's, but hang on.
Two-seventy-five, I get it.
I know, but you have to understand, you have to understand that this is, you know, while you guys are tax-paying residents and everything else, the issue is that it's, it is a municipal lot, so that lot is owned by all the residents in Garden City, so trying to come up with a fair, you know, rental for a designated spot, I know everyone's saying a hundred bucks, and if you were at the meeting, then, I don't know, we had these...
Wait, hold on. No, 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 what you just, we're not looking to come up with designated spots for people, for people who have, for residents, we're trying to keep the commuters out.
I know, and...
That's what the whole thing is all about.
So bear with me for a sec. So what we're really talking about is enforcement, right, for the people who are parking there all day. One of the suggested ways to deal with that is to have residents have some sort of a badge or sticker that says, I'm a resident here, for a sum. Then we could say, in this area, you guys park, then we can change the hours everywhere else in that lot, so when the commuters come and they try to stay there all day, we can nab the commuters and not give you guys a ticket. Hang on just a second, let me finish. The issue has become about the two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Now, the issue was, there was, again, a lot of discussion, should it be a hundred dollars? Should it be fifty? Should it be three hundred? I think the sums went as high as five hundred at one point. I did two-seventy-five, when you consider that I am also a tax-paying resident, I buy a train ticket, or a train permit, for a hundred-and-fifty dollars, I use it Monday to Friday from about, you know, seven in the morning to seven at night. And considering that, for a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five pass, should be more money than that pass. The two-seventy-five was agreed on broadly, that that seemed fair, because it's roughly, it's not quite twice as much as my parking permit, but close. You know, weekends included, nighttime, et cetera, et cetera. That is literally the reason that we started down this road probably over a year ago with some of the residents of sixty-seven Hilton at the CPOA meeting. So this was an effort, okay, to do just exactly what you're saying. The issue has become around the two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, and it's, you know, I saw somebody wrote a letter in the paper, said it was a money grab by the board, I mean, it's ridiculous stuff. We thought it was fair based on where the benchmark of the current, you know, cost is for a railroad ticket, and that's what we based it on.
And the convenience of the parking location in Garden City Park.
And, which is the same convenience for trains, right?
Surrounding buildings where they are parking.
Right. So we thought we were pretty fair, you know, so if this is about the pricing...
It's not, it's not being charged against me, is it?
No, no, this is my time. This is my time. You know, so if this is, if this, you know, let's break this down. If you guys don't want permit parking, that's fine, we don't, I don't have to vote on this. If it's about the two-hundred-and-seventy-five being too much, then that's something we should talk about.
You've addressed this before, you're being repetitive now, earlier in the meeting.
No, no, hang on a sec. If it's the two-seventy-five that we want to zero in on as being too exorbitant, or you want to talk about that, then focus the comments on that. But I, we understand the problem. We know what we're talking about, and, you know, this is not new for us. This might be the first night you've come, but we've been talking about this over a year. And so, that's it. Now you can get back to your two-and-a-half minutes that I've written.
No, I think that your time is up.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand, you're not speaking into the mic loud enough.
Thank you. I said that I thought that your time, you were speaking that before with Trustee Menudo, and I thought that your time is starting to expire, but we're giving a certain, exact amount of time.
What, but what we're trying to do is get the commuters out of that parking lot. That if you gave everybody in Hilton Hall a sticker, charge them a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty or something, a reasonable price, and tell the other people, hey, if you're still there, we're gonna, we're gonna take it to you, you wouldn't need to appropriate spots anywhere. It would be, it would be a nice...
So your suggestion, so your suggestion is that everyone who sits there in Hilton is gonna pay a hundred dollars for a permit sticker, right?
I'll give a hundred-and-fifty.
No, no, just say it's a hundred, right? Okay, so there's a hundred for residents.
Then it would be the same as in there.
Wait, just, just let me talk.
Go ahead.
I'm going with your idea. So everyone in Hilton, a hundred dollars for a permit. Agreed?
Right.
Okay, fifty people say I'm not gonna do it. What do you do now? No, 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 what, no, just think about that.
You guys, you guys are the party, you're the best people you want.
No, 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 listen to me. What do we do with the fifty people who live at Hilton, who park in the lot and say, no, I don't wanna spend a hundred dollars? What do we do to them? Do we give them tickets every day?
Yes, give them a ticket.
Oh, okay. Okay, no, I want it to you. So if they refuse, so...
It makes me use a psychopath.
And you're thinking...
You can't browbeat someone into buying a permit.
This is why, this is why permits don't work.
And that's, you know, I'm tending to agree with Trustee, but I don't think this is worth...
What do you mean you can't browbeat?
You can require so much, you know...
There is a law, there is a law out there that's stationed around here that doesn't judge.
No, no, but you cannot, you cannot make it mandatory that by living at Hilton Hall you have to pay a hundred dollars for parking.
Thank you for approving my point.
You cannot do that.
Okay.
You can't. So all I'm saying is, this whole thing seems, you know, it would be nice if at one or two meetings, people assumed positive intent here. We were trying to help, okay? If it's not helping and it's negative, then we don't have to do it.
All right, sir, your time is up. Thank you. Have already spoken?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sandy, I'm in sixty-seven Hilton, not to be a dead horse, I'm not gonna be here for my four minutes. I did say yes to the permit parking, but I think the fee is really the pressure point here. Two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars is just a lot of money for a pilot program. I think it was like seventy-five, a hundred, people might be more behind it. I've lived in, I've rented a lot of apartments, I've done permit parking where I didn't have to pay anything for it, and it wasn't an issue. If you lose your, if you lose your permit, you had to pay a fee, or if you got a new car, so you got a new car, you paid a fee to replace the permit, which was like twenty bucks. So I think that something along those lines might be a little more reasonable, two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars right off the bat. And I also commute to the city, so I do leave my car there, I can leave it there all week, but sometimes I don't even use it. I pay two-hundred-and-seventy dollars for my train ticket, and I don't pay anything for the parking, so I have to pay for the parking on top of it. It's just a lot of money for a pilot program, I think that's really the pressure point.
The program is for the parking that's right next to the parking lot. There's still areas in the parking lot that you can park.
Also, when we looked at the parking, we looked at other condominiums and stuff, when you rented Hilton Hall, you're not getting a parking space. You rent an apartment, and you go to the municipal lot, and you have to comply with the regulations in the municipal lot. So residents came to the board because commuters were taking those spaces, so this was a plan to alleviate that. So if this is a municipal lot and all the residents in Garden City are betting for it, you would be paying the same rate as what I pay for my driveway, what somebody pays for a condominium. So it's not that you get to get a break because you're in Hilton Hall, you didn't buy parking when you rented your apartment. So this is allowing you to have a spot near the building, a municipal lot in the center of town, near stores and a train station at a premium price, where we thought this was a fair and equitable rate for all the other residents who buy and pay for parking.
And just one, just one thing that I would like to say is this. Come, and I can hear the comment, what are the other things they're gonna do? What are the other things they're gonna do? We have already said, I can't think of how many times, this is the first step. So let's just say there are ten steps in order to resolve the parking issue in Hilton Hall, and I already mentioned several of them today. For example, having twenty spots in front of the grocery stores for only hours, this way people could always come and go when everything else is done. So the bottom line is, is that there are so many things that would have to be done in the lot, this is the first thing, this is the reason why it was a pilot program, is we said, let's sit there, let's do this. And one of the things we said was, when we first started, let us send out the responses to the people in Hilton. Now, if we had sent out a hundred and four spots, and two people came back to us and said, we'll take the spots, guess what? We're not even gonna proceed, why? Because there's not an interest in the building. But when twenty-nine people come back and say, yes, I'm willing to pay a premium to have a spot next to the building, and I understand what you're doing, and I wanna have a spot, then that's the response, and that's the reason why we continue to proceed, so, I'm sorry, mayor.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Dionne McGowan, sixty-seven Hilton Avenue. We keep saying parking space is for us next to the building. I was under the impression from articles that they were going to go across what we call the garage, where the bushes are, and down Stewart Avenue. Is that correct? Where are these spaces you're parking in? Where's the road?
One of the things I pointed out at a meeting, a couple meetings ago, was along the building, then on the south east corner of the lot, which is right across from the building, and possibly the first row, eight spots to get to thirty-five. All of, they're the closest spots in the building.
The closest spots to the building are across what we call the garage and the row of hedges.
That's the row.
And the rows closest to us are the ones where the handicap spots are.
We don't, we don't, we don't have handicap spaces.
Go beyond the handicap spaces, there's a row all the way down the side of buildings. And the first row here goes all the way down. Why can't we have those spots straight in front of our door? I mean, for us to buy a space for two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars when our door is here and two and a half, three blocks away, we're giving us a space?
That's not the area we're talking about. So we're talking about the building, by the little building, right on the south end, not further along. That's right, right in Jason's building.
These spots that are available are more than reasonable. I'm not bothering, no, you're...
The spots, the ones behind ninety-nine?
I'll be disgusted.
I'm sorry.
And that's the south side of the parking lot, the I-99.
One second, ma'am. It's the, it's the ones right next to sixty-seven Hilton, it's twenty spots, right along the edges. Then there's...
Only north, north-south?
Yes, the further east of the bottom line, further west, I'm sorry. And then there's a cluster of three or four, I believe two, and then five. And then there's also, the first row is eight. So you get to the thirty-five, you have twenty, and there's twenty-seven, twenty, then seven in the corner, by the western parking lot, and then the first row there, there's a double side there. And that will be right next to us, the closest spots in the building.
Are they the ones along Stewart Avenue, or are they the ones that back up on to ninety-nine?
They're along sixty-seven Hilton, there's a corner of sixty-seven Hilton.
That's about fifteen or seventeen.
There's twenty spots there now. And then there's four more, and then there's the first row, the third double row, is, I'm glad to question your, if you look at the handicap parking, you can go to the first row, it's right there. And there's a couple on the north-southwest part. There's the westernmost spots available that we can find. That's close to the building, you're in the west part of the lot.
So they're not going down Stewart Avenue?
That's, no, we'll do it this time unless it expands.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
If there is no one else who wishes to speak, do I have a motion?
I have a motion, ma'am.
Wait a moment.
Just to add to the record, if you could just accept it for the record, the letter from the Nassau County Planning Commission, which is what's referred to as a local determination letter, that was the document we were waiting for, for, and for the reason that we had adjourned it the last time. So if that is, can be accepted to the record, thank you.
That is accepted into the record. All right, if there is no one else who wishes to speak, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? And second, trustee Foley. All right, is there any discussion? Seeing all of these in favor, it is unanimous.
No, we haven't voted yet. We don't.
All right. All in favor, say.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Is it unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, that passed, that motion passed unanimously. The public hearing regarding a. A proposed local law to authorize a temporary pilot program. Of restricted parking at the western side of Garden City Parking Field Seven Avenue under a pilot program to entail thirty-five parking spaces for a period of up to one year for persons residing in premises adjacent to Field Seven Avenue. At a fee of two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the duration of the pilot program is closed. Does any trustee wish to move to adopt that local law? Trustee Delaney, uh, Dorni, I'm making that mistake. And a second, please. Trustee Foley. All right, all those in favor? That motion passed unanimously. Okay, there's seven, six, six, yes, and one, no. And that one is an absence, right. Does any trustee wish to move adoption of the local law?
We did that.
We did that, okay. Are we finished?
Yes.
Yes. The local law is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-third, twenty nineteen? Trustee McPrenus, the second. Deputy Mayor Bolivar. All those in favor? I, that motion passed unanimously. Now we'll go to the consent calendar. I would like to remove item nineteen. The retention of Seaford Shore from the consent calendar. Because of a family member of conflict and the underlying litigation for which this firm is being retained, I am recusing. I have not participated in any deliberation related to this matter and will be abstaining from voting on this item. Is there a motion to adopt, however, the, the consent calendar minus that item?
I don't want one.
All right, trustee Dorni. And a second, trustee Delaney. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, then vote.
I move item nineteen.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar, minus the item I did and you did?
Yeah, we already did that.
All right, okay.
We're gonna go first.
Yeah, okay, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, hearing, all those in favor, say aye, we did this, okay. Um, as. As, as to the removed item, at this time I am temporarily turning the gavel over to the deputy mayor as I will be abstaining from the vote.
And then we're gonna get it back. All right.
Watch it.
I made a mistake.
Thank the mayor, members of the board. Thank the mayor, members of the board. Is there a motion to adopt the removal item?
I will make that motion.
And a second is making a motion. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And would the court please note that the mayor has recused and has not participated in any deliberations on the item and has abstained from the vote, which came unanimously, six to zero. The item has otherwise been unanimously kept. Mayor, I return the vote to you.
And the world's side.
And the world's side. All right, I think that this time. At this time, I would challenge citizen comments on any issue that you wish. Do you have anyone who would like to come forward? Yes.
Judy Courtney, three, three months' street.
Can you speak right into the mic?
Judy Courtney, three, three months' street. It's not about parking. I have two questions. One is, and I apologize, I just can't find it. Where's the paving schedule on the website? I know I saw it and now I can't find it.
The paving schedule, sometimes it's right. I did the poll, they're probably close. Yeah, it's on the left, I was just in the left.
All right, I'll look again. Let's start. My other question is, can someone give me an update on the SFA work and when we should be hearing something back from them?
We're a little limbo, I gotta get them sort of restarted back. But they've gotten the info from the various P O A surveys, what we call it, so we're gonna get them removed back.
So initially, they had said it would be three to four weeks, so I know it's.
But it's partly, it's partly.
I'm sure.
They actually came back and said, we're not sure what you want us to do it because.
One of the reasons is that they are a little surprised at the lack of input from the residents.
And the various groups.
And the various groups, there was some.
You were at the meeting.
I was there, I.
Unfortunately, we didn't get the participation.
So we think we have to go back and maybe broaden it a little and so that we get proper participation and we're not accused that we're running with just a few.
Right.
So that is where we.
Okay.
And also defer them. We, we, as you know, we had three people, two people from the Red Commission show. So, I know, you were there.
And the coaches were.
Efficient, efficient.
Efficient. All right, if you need any help, let us know, thank you.
Please come forward.
I'm ready, Thomas Buckland, three sixty-five Stewart Avenue. Boy, I got a lot of issues here. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna email much of this to every one of you, so don't take up all of it. The main thing I'd like to talk about is an anti-idling law that exists in New York City, it exists in the city of Brocksville, it exists in the city of Rochelle, the town of Mariner, and it's been on the books since two thousand and six. What it is, is it makes it illegal for people to park specifically. I think I'll wait till the mayor is free. What it involves, it makes it illegal for people to park and let their engines run for more than three to five minutes. They are seriously fined, anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars. We know that the planet is warming, there's more than four hundred parts per billion of CO2 in the atmosphere. It's not healthy for people to do this for themselves because they sit in their car and breathe this in. It's not healthy for children or people that are sitting in restaurants, eating here on Seventh Avenue. And it's not healthy for the entire planet. How can Garden City advance a law that seems to be in all these other towns in Westchester and not here? How do we do that? How do we put a law together that is, is, protects our environment, prevents people from sitting in their cars and texting to the engine on the road? How do we do that?
Well, it doesn't seem to be a pressing item among other members in the community because this is the first that I've heard of it.
Whoa. Well, my suggestion would be, why don't you present the facts and information and why don't you work with the Environmental Advisory Board and have them investigate it to where they can turn around and put together the information? And then what would happen was that board, which is established for this specific reason, would then give a recommendation to the board of trustees.
Okay, I don't mean to be rude, but last time I went to one of these meetings, it was all about the fertilizer and how you took care of the parks. And out of eight parks, there's three of them that you're doing organically and the rest of them you're not. So what you're putting on that is stuff like Roundup, which is cancer-caused. It's not healthy for children to be playing on, we know this. There's over thirteen thousand lawsuits against Monceal and the Bear, and yet we continue to do this because, as you said, we go step, little step by little step. So this is, this is, this is a critical issue. There are children around the world that are protesting this, they're bringing cases against the United States government, they're bringing cases against Monceal.
I, I think we're all pretty aware of that. I think the, the issue, or to trash your comment, is the best way, if you'd like, to enact some sort of proposal on the anti-idling would be to go to the Environmental Advisory Board meeting and then have them present something to this board for a second.
I don't think they'll be on board with it. You know, I, I don't, I don't find them proactive in this area. That's why I'm presenting it to you and hoping to find somebody on your board that would initiate this action.
Well, first of all, I support your, your aspect of it, your idling. Because I will tell you, when my wife and I sit there and then all of a sudden a delivery truck turns around and pulls up, it just happens to happen every single time we ever sit and eat outside, and we just find it amazing. I think like they actually text them and say, you know, trustee Bolivar's getting there, why don't you go park the car there and make the truck make a delivery? So I, I totally a hundred percent support what you wanna do. What you're saying to us is that what is the best and the fastest way for this to get done? This is the way the structure of our government is set up. And even though you and or I may agree with this, we're not going to make a rule or a rule change or a regulation or a law in the village based upon not having enough information. So what I would suggest you do is, as you've said before, go to the Environmental Advisory Board, present your facts, present your data, present your information, and allow them to evaluate it and then give a recommendation to the board. If you want them to come on and do that, there's nothing we can do.
You can also go to your P O A.
Yeah, yeah.
Where do you live? Where do you live?
Three sixty-five. The East P O A.
The East, go to the East P O A.
Yeah, who's that exactly?
Gentlemen, great beard, yellow shirt, that guy, is you? Lives on Yellow Street, but not Lisa?
Social security number and date of birth, please.
Go to your P O A.
Yeah, okay.
Present them with the theory, concept, and see what they'll have to say.
But you know, it's the summertime, we're gonna be outside in front of all these restaurants with their car engines running, and you're gonna be out there having your meal, and you're gonna be going, wow.
So we're not disagreeing with you, we're giving you two avenues to go. Your response to us is.
So we're telling you how to get into the system. It's your choice if you take it.
We're trying to help you and you're not, you're not listening.
Who's the, who's the exact person I see? Who's the person beside him on the, on the environmental board here?
I would say that again.
All right.
Our next, our next meeting is in September.
Oh, so there goes the whole summer.
That's it.
You know, there goes the whole summer.
We don't have the Latin in that, because as much as I might agree with you, we don't do things because one person asked.
You know, you know this girl, Breda Thonberg?
Excuse me, oh, excuse me, sorry, your time is up.
Mayor, please, mayor.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting and move into an advisory.
Before we do that, I have a couple.
There's other people or something.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Please come forward.
Mayor, can I comment to all, Smith is walking up? We don't use Roundup in the village to line up parks and or playgrounds. Sir, Pine Street, otherwise, like you know, it's holes in the trail. I wanted to thank the building department, the Department of Public Works, the rest of the street that has had difficulties in construction, the reconstruction of the waterline. Yes, we say that in terms of the house next door has been, I think, and I hope, an outlier in terms of how contractors behave in the building department, the Department of Public Works, helpful. But I'm hoping that these two managers, what respect, can put forward their lessons learned of a future event. Joe, they could visit with the Pine Street, with the trustee, hire, source some solutions and solve many of the interim problems that the boards are getting the streets swept there regularly and some other things in terms of the building department, as I said, I think we have a situation where we may have a difficulty with the contractor. I mean, this, this is debris all over the place, dumpsters that are constantly overloaded, not picked up on time, nails spread all over the place, so sloppiness. And I'm hoping that managers with this lessons learned situation can go to the board and get any additional enforcement or tools in that kit that they can keep close to control over both the street and reworks in the face of mine and others, and certainly in the situation with houses and the heavy rehab of construction of those. I doubt, if my experience is the only one happening in Garden City, this heavy building reconstruction that's happening in Garden City, I'm sure that others may be in the A D R B or other areas that can add input to those departments so that they can, their toolkit is stronger in terms of being able to, I think, Garden City can then place a little bit as the needs of reconstruction to happen, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion to.
Mayor, seal, I think I have to say, seal. Those, whatever you call them, boards, picture boards that were at the celebration? What happened, where are those? Where, what happened to them?
There's one downstairs, a bill is.
Are you talking about the story boards?
Yes.
Uh, John Wilton, Paul Haslam, right now.
Are they?
They are, they are qualified to build, the village did not purchase them.
Who purchased them?
He did.
John Wilton did purchase those. There is a, a new business on Franklin Avenue, just opposite Seventh Street. They are very creative. They designed our logo, they, they pop-ups, that's the beautiful thing that we saw when you walked into the building this evening.
That's right. There is a plan for using that, don't follow me, thanks for your time.
No, my question is, who ordered them and who paid for them?
John Wilton paid for them.
As part of the, as part of the community.
The committee ordered them, but there was a hang-up with the funding for them, and Wilton cut the forty, did not, so to speak, and purchased them.
So why wouldn't we purchase that?
Well, we didn't order them and we were, the prices on them were very, very high.
What was, you mean, the prices? I mean, they were excellent, I think we should.
They are excellent, and he purchased them and those.
We should, we should, we should buy them.
I think we talked about having him be reimbursed, we just didn't get to that one.
I would suggest, they were really nice, we buy them.
They were very nice.
And we'll put them somewhere.
And we'll use it.
We can use them in the library, we can use them in the Cedar Center, we'll find a place.
We said we're gonna use them on the pool when they have theirs, you know, we had a bunch of different avenues that we were gonna use them on.
There, there's more in the harbor that can be done.
I'm, I'm just focused on what was there. So somebody has, they would purchase, I would suggest that we buy them. And I'll make that motion, I guess we'll go off the agenda.
Let's approach, let's approach.
Let's find out what the cost was and let's buy them.
Let's approach Mr. Wilton and find out.
Yeah, why don't we find out more about this?
And then go from there, and then put the idea in line with what he wants to purchase.
By the way, by the way, I just wanna say that a lot of the things that we purchase and we charge to get to the count for the centennial celebration are really things that could be used by the village and should be used by the village and should have been purchased as a regular item by the village. Eleven beautiful flags about incorporation, the pop-ups that you saw when you walked in, they're stunning. They really are things that we should have in the community and would buy on a regular basis as they wore out. So I could, that has to do with banners, pop-ups, and flags, and banners. All of those things are really, way, way beyond just being a part of the centennial celebration. They're the working materials of a, of a good village, you know, so we can look into the issue with Mr. Wilton. We didn't purchase them because I thought the price was way high, but we can look into that and see what happens. Thank you for bringing it up.
I will, and the code of what the mayor said there is, is the heritage of this village, the history of this village is a very important asset. The trustees can consider that going forward. What came out of this committee in terms of what, this development that Storian has put into the digital files can be expanded in a good way for the village with a. The trustees can consider that going forward. What came out of this committee, in terms of what, this development that the historian has put into the digital files can be expanded in a good way for the village with a, an additional budget, but not an extensive one. That can do so much with carrying forward to the rest of the residents, like the story boards and whatnot on this. I've had several conversations with some trustees and some other ideas which are in the harbor. We're not ready to present them yet, but the only thing I'm asking is remember, your favorable comments now, because later, when some bills or projected bills would be provided to those issues.
Well, I, I will say that was stunning at the event. By the way, that event was a tremendous success. I think there were at least 1,000 people there. And it was, uh, everything was, was positive about it, food trucks. And a lot of people, and I'll get to that, a lot of people from the, uh, village, uh, worked on that and it made a tremendous success for Karen Oldman. John Wilton, by the way, uh, had a lot of creative ideas because he takes care of the prominent lots, he's right on top of that subject, and actually saved us a lot of things. He picked the band, it was excellent. It, uh, was a very big key to success that evening. Carissa was a tremendous help, uh, putting the, the four weeks of posters in the, uh, Garden City rooms, the last three full pages, I think of what brought people out and made them understand exactly what was coming down there. Trustee Dorni provided the, or worked on the, um, fireworks, and I tell you that everyone enjoyed them tremendously. And, um, I just think that was a knockout and a very good idea, and I can't tell you how many people said that evening, could we do this more often? And I thought that was really nice, you know, it was very, very good. They did not pay in any admission, they did not pay for the rides with youngsters. There were people, they were all ages, it was wonderful. I remember about two, two years ago or a year and a half ago, when, uh, I think it was Mayor Dorni then, brought up the idea of the two anniversaries and what would we do for them? And I immediately realized that we had to have an event like that. And so I, we created the whole thing, it really worked out wonderfully. A lot of people, the people from DPW, the people from, right, the people, the police and the firefighters, everyone was way up and above board and wonderful. So, uh, I think as a, as a village, we should be proud of that event, and also of the other things that we have, we have planned for the rest of the year, because remember that the proclamation said that 2019 full year would be a celebration of our two anniversaries. Okay? And the proclamation, proclamation is hanging right out here in the hallway. Okay, any other?
Yeah, I got a couple. Sorry, sorry to drag this out, but, um, I'd, I'd like the board to think about two things. First is, I'd like us to think about, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but I think there's a need for, uh, putting lot size minimums in the village. We've done that in the past, uh, corner lots in the center section. So the second minimums, the second topic I'd like us to start thinking about is, we ran into this a lot and continue to, but with our digitalization and trying to get old permits cleared out. Is there a way that we can, somewhere in the sales process of a home, require, whether it's the seller or the real estate agent, somebody has to be responsible and certify to the buyer or the village that all permits are in place or work that's been done? I mean, we all know, you walk into a house that has a finished basement, quite frankly, if you're a buyer and you don't know you're supposed to have a permit and there should be one, you're partly to blame. But certainly, work gets done without being properly permitted. And I think we need to figure out a way to control that and stop it. And somebody's gotta bear the burden for that to work. So I don't know if you have, you have to, when you're selling a house, the real estate agent has to certify to the buyer and give a copy to the village, or the seller has to certify to the buyer.
Shouldn't the attorney solicit for his car owner to find?
No, it doesn't come up in the...
Title search.
Open permits should.
If the permit wasn't ever sought, you don't have it.
Yeah, well, I think you said about something different, saying work, not, I thought you were saying open permits, open purpose.
That is part of it, that is part of it.
You were saying work that was executed without a permit, that should open the survey.
No, 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 not on, not on a survey. If you had work in your basement, that's not on a survey. If you, if you added some...
When they do the description of visible square footage, the inspection.
There's no requirement that that be accurate.
I think by way of illustration, you're suggesting that if someone, by way of example, had illegally constructed a bathroom in the basement, it didn't show up at the survey, it might show up in a home inspection. It should show up to the savvy buyer who sees a bathroom there and then doesn't see a permit for it on the department reports of the title report. But there are situations certainly where homes take, exchange title without, uh...
Absolutely.
Being legalized.
And knowing legal or not, sometimes it gets reflected in the price and there's a wink and a nod, and our people have been in that house for 22 years and they don't know what's in there. And then we get a buyer, eight years later, or a third-tier buyer, who says, I didn't know, this was done when I bought it. Well, if there's a system in place to stop it, they sometimes stop it, it may be lawful. No, I'm sorry, we need to take a phone call.
Is there anything else? Yeah. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Mayor, I think we have, can we have a motion to move to the next session?
Okay, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
That was successful.